Good evening. I call this meeting to order at 6:01. And, okay, this slide on, okay, so attendance here tonight, we have Ted Gergen, Nick Poloney, myself, Dana Powers, and Jack Nicolai. I could have a motion to include Steve virtually. Is that me?
I move to include Steve virtually.
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And, okay, Steve, you are approved. Can you hear us? Steve? No.
Yes, he's muted. All right. Steve, can you hear us?
I can hear you, thank you.
Great, okay. You have been approved to join in virtually.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so we're gonna, really, this is starting off as how it ended three weeks ago, we're basically picking it right back up again to continue discussion. So there's nothing to present, per se, from Connie. We have a couple of backup slides, just in case we want to include them in any of our discussion pieces. So I did want to point out a couple of things. I know you guys have been receiving the same information and the same emails, but I just wanted to recap a couple of things, just so we were all on the same page. So first of all, we learned that the Kenosha County Health Department acknowledges that they do not have the power to shut down a school. So that was a clarification that they provided in the, was it the Kenosha News? Go ahead, did you have?
My close reading.
It, and is it, is it, oh, okay.
There you go.
Are we good?
Yeah, I think that's better.
Thanks. Not used to making fun, sorry. So they acknowledge that. We also learned from the Wisconsin Supreme Court that, again, similar to that, where the county health departments don't have the approval to set up a plan, it's the individual school boards that do. Correct? Yeah. Oh, on the same page. Just making sure we all read that the same way. Okay, so I wanted to clarify those two points. And then, really, it's let's open it back up for discussion. So anything you guys thought of in the meantime? Anything you want to keep talking through?
I guess with, I guess with regards to what the health department does have the authority to, and I would refer to Connie for this, is that they do have the ability to isolate individuals in the event of a COVID-19 case. Is that correct?
Quarantine, yeah. Yes, and quarantine.
And quarantine, okay. So they still have power based upon true infection at that point, correct?
Oh, without a doubt.
Okay, I just wanted to make that very clear.
Oh, yes, absolutely. So it's more of the acknowledging that, no, they, it can't, it isn't a shutdown situation. It is a, you know, quarantining is something that they have the ability to do, but outside of that.
Right, mine's more of a clarification point. So in a mass situation, they don't have the ability to, but on an individual case basis, they do have the power.
Oh, absolutely.
For a positive case.
Right, just want to clarify.
Correct. When somebody is positive or, it's the same rules apply, where if mother, father, anyone else that has lived with, that's, that's separate.
Correct.
From that, yep. Okay, so any other discussion points, things you want to talk about in regard to COVID protocols?
I mean, what I will say is, even with some of the decisions that were passed on in some of the discussion that I had with several people after the last meeting three weeks ago, and personally, you know, and I don't care who knows, and personally, in the last two weeks, my family had to be quarantined due to a true COVID-19 case, and I'll say that was not the most fun in the world. In fact, my kids are still in isolation until Friday. So just, and again, I don't mind anyone knowing that, it's just part of the world as it churns, so that's why I wasn't at the last board meeting. But I'll just say, from a personal perspective, actually going through the process of what the health department does have the authority to do, and dealing with the illness as it is presented, not only to adult, but to children, was not necessarily a fun situation. And I could see firsthand, finally, after two years, of what it does look like on an individual basis, and how extraordinarily hard it is on a family to quarantine and then isolate for 10 days after a certain period of time. So my kids will actually be out of school for close to three weeks, and essentially, if one of them develops a case right now, they could be out for another 14 days. And then my other one, if he gets it, they could potentially be out for a close to 48 days, period. So, you know, my entire goal and situation that I find myself, and that's with two children, right, is I truly believe in having the kids in the school regardless, you know, not, I mean, I can't fight the health department on the power that they have for that particularly. But what I will say is that I can see how devastating a situation of an outbreak in a school could end up being, especially, I'll say, the learning process for my children in the last three weeks has been not only difficult, but I would say extraordinarily irritable to their learning processes, young minds, right? So I will say that my original stance personally on the recommendation from the administration three weeks ago is unless I'm convinced other by another sort of presentation, or whatever the case is, that's my firm belief at this point still. And that's the original green, yellow.
Oh.
The original recommendation from the administrative team, correct?
Got it.
I don't want to speak for everyone, because I can't.
Mic closer.
I know that, am I on? Yes. I know that I've spent some time the last couple of weeks reading and paying close attention to what people had to say, and it really is a very, very wide subject. There are a lot of things involved, and we're in a position here where we have a lot of responsibility. And I think my focus personally has been lasered out a little more. I'm a little clearer about what I feel and where I'd like to see things go. And part of that was just the input from the audience. It forced me to really evaluate a lot of things I was thinking about. So I think now I'm ready, if we're going to make a decision. I know which way I'm going to go.
Obviously, I think all of us have spent considerable amount of time since the last meeting evaluating the public feedback, both the constituents that send us emails, the public comments that were at the last meeting, but I think also looking at a lot of the data that's presented to us. I think we were in a different place three weeks ago, right, with the spike that was taking place. But I think additionally, unless I'm wrong, I still don't feel like we have school spread in classrooms, right?
So we have, I would say there are a couple cases this year that have been suspect, but nothing definitive. But the vast majority of our cases this year have not been related to classroom spread.
And I think that's the same experience that I have in the school that I work at, and a lot of colleagues have similar experiences, where it's just for whatever mitigation strategies are in place in different schools, there's, the spread isn't there. So, I mean, definitely have reconsidered and thought through things a little bit differently, so.
Curious where that conversation goes.
Yeah, and from my point of view, and like Ted, I have had the opportunity to not only, well, all of us, to read all of the information that has been made available, to look at the current data as far as the exposure rates, but also talking to a lot of parents who have cut, who have just, parents I know in the community after 18 years, who have their various points of view. And as we know from the presentations that parents and community members made, that there's a wide range of opinions and points of view. I personally still like the protocol, the protocols that were in place for the last school year, and I am not, I'm not one who likes to overstate anything. So anyway, that's, that's my position right now.
And just to clarify, that position is?
That position is to, that the, the recommendations that were made by the administrative staff, I will not vote in favor of that, as I did at the last board meeting, or the previous meeting three weeks ago, rather. And also, I, I still like the protocols that were in place for last school year.
Do you want to move it, a motion?
So I think it would be more beneficial to do discussion, and, and then as we, okay, the data on the cases, not, or, but not, not, the day, okay, here. The data is showing that there is not school spread. You can't, data cannot be argued with when it's in case form. Even when it was higher, so was the rest of Kenosha, the rest of Wisconsin. So it's not a case of we are getting more and more cases within our school versus our neighboring school across the border, across 94. If data was showing different information, then I think we could have a different conversation. But it's, if we're pulling for the kids, and if this is for the kids, which it is, then could we be for the kids? And I know that kind of sounds ridiculous, but it's, instead of being against something, if we're for something. And it could be, we are for keeping the kids in the schoo, in the school, so we can work on closing the gap, social and emotional, so we can make sure that we focus on those things. Rather than getting tied up in being against masking. You know what I'm saying?
So I think maybe the easiest way to get a consensus, and what people are thinking here is this. I'm personally in favor of doing some sort of program that could include mandatory masking. That's my opinion, that's my thought, I'm one of five board members. I think whether that is the plan by the administration originally, or it's some altered plan, whatever that might be, whatever that might look like, I'm in favor of doing something. And I think what we may be to start out the discussion is to see where everyone's mindset is on whether we should do anything, or should we do something. And I'm personally in favor of doing something, and I know the staff here, I know my wife, who is also an educator, and a parent of two children in the school, that's how I believe, that's how I think things are right. In my mind, I'm only trying to do what I believe is right, and that's what I think is right. So I'm in favor of doing something, whether that allows optional usage of masks, or mandatory usage of masks up to a certain threshold. And I think at the point, too, the kids are obviously paramount, but we also cannot forget the staff in this case, too. And looking at the data of the surveys that were put out, the number one majority was in favor of doing something. The minor majority of 30-some percent was doing no masking at all, and then there was a threshold of indifference. So if we're looking statistically at data, like you brought up, we have to look at the data of our own community and the surveys put out. So for me, to ignore a vast majority of, how many surveys was it, 900-something surveys?
Six.
Or 600, would be me not doing my constituency and the people who took the surveys, I wouldn't be doing them any justice in my mindset. So I'm in favor of doing something. I don't think we should continue on with the way the policy is currently, period. That's just my thought.
We can still.
If I could, if I could add something then, with regards to that, the, the, the policy that is currently in place is doing something, okay? We state, Connie, do you have the language of the, of the policy in place with regards to mask? If you could read that, have someone read it?
The language related to masking is highly recommended.
Okay. So when I hear that, and, and kind of elaborating on what Nick just said, we did have, we do have a policy in place, and I don't want anyone to think that we don't. And it worked pretty darn well last year. Our numbers right now are not, are not terrible. They're, you know, I, you know, one is, one is too many, okay? And I am absolutely in favor of making sure that we provide a quality education for every single student, and we also look at issues of safety and health. And we do have a policy in place that has been working. And, and the policies that were recommended, I, I applaud the administration for coming up with something for us to look at. But we do have a policy in place. So to say that, that, you know, all or nothing, we do have something in place now that has worked pretty darn well, in my opinion, is one board member.
So I just want to clarify, though, because you talked about last year. So last year, we had mandatory masking.
Exactly.
So the highly recommended masking started with this school year, just so we're clarifying.
No, absolutely, I understand that. So that's why I asked you to read that, Connie, in terms of what the, what the current policy in place is. So, thank you.
Sorry.
So highly recommended is non-enforceable, right? That's not language, that's not a policy, that's a recommendation, right? So if I look at a policy, I'm looking at a strategic plan put in place in the event of a, in the event of an uprising, right, in uptick of cases, right? That's a plan. I think when we put out the survey to the parents in the community in which their students go here, I think we're pretty clear, and I'm sure they're pretty understanding of what was last year, and what's going on currently. And again, if it said 65% said no masking, I would be the opposite way on that, because I think as an elected person, you have to listen to your constituency, good or bad. The fact remains, the survey that we put out with a pretty overwhelming response said they want something in place, and what that means is what is currently in place isn't in their mind what I believe to be something.
And not to nitpick that, but it's, what we learned from three weeks ago is that the questions were confusing. And it was set up in their minds as being, we either shut down, or we make changes.
Yeah, and I learned something three weeks ago, too, that COVID kind of sucks, and having it was really kind of terrible for me and my family. So I have a better perspective on what that looks like now, too. So.
And that, and understandable.
Yeah.
And the reality is, I've had it, too.
Sure.
And it does suck. I don't think anybody's talking about that. But there's also, then, natural immunity, which is something that came up as well. And there are numbers of, what was it, I already forgot what they were, but however many cases last year, and however many cases this year. You start doing the math on that, and you realize that we, we have another section. We have kids who are now naturally immune, and we have kids who haven't gotten it. So it's a, how does that factor into the situation, too?
Okay. Well, to, to discuss feelings, as you often bring up, feelings aren't necessarily a definitive way to make action happen, to some degree, right? So I'm not going to discuss my feelings necessarily, I'm going to use the data that has been presented to us. And I personally don't believe that the survey that was put out was very confusing. I would feel it would be hard to find that confusing, maybe the way the data was compiled during a particular meeting.
Okay, so we don't need to go into this. So it's a matter of, if we look at data, we have a survey that had 600 results.
Correct.
Somebody could argue that that's 300 families, if both the husband and the wife did the survey. We can argue this until we're blue in the face. We also had a meeting three weeks ago, where it was communicated to the school that we were going to be discussing the COVID protocols, and 15 out of 15 comments were anti-mask. That is a data point. Also, the emails and what's coming in from our constituents, the majority, actually, let me rephrase that. In the last three weeks, we have received anti-mask emails only. Now, that is not necessarily a survey that we subjectively put out, but it's still data, and the people who want to be heard are making themselves heard. If we're going to follow what our local data says, and what our constituents are saying, I think it's, they're making themselves clear that they want a choice.
Yeah, and I would argue, in my threshold of people that I talk to, that they're over, they understand the level of intelligence generally that this board has, and they trust us to make the right decision, right? So that being said, the, the large amount of people that I associate myself with trust my judgment points on the decisions that I'm making, right? And that's part of me being an elected official, right? So rather than keep on discussing, I believe that the administration that originally put out their original plan, or some variation of that, not only has been endorsed by the teachers to some degree, or all degree, or whatever degree that is, but based upon a survey that I'm just not going to disregard because a vast majority of people sending.
Nobody is saying it's being disregarded. It's one of several data points.
Sure, okay. Well, one of several data points that I, that I'm referring to is that there's been an overwhelming, in my mind, 60% to 30% is pretty overwhelming, that some sort of action needs to be taken. However.
I don't think anybody is objecting.
Also, to put the survey into context, the, the data is what it is, right?
Yep.
Like you're saying.
Totally.
I do think, when that survey came out, we had reached this critical juncture as well, right? So, like, as I'm thinking, through, through the last three weeks, I'm looking at the numbers and how they've decreased, but I know at that time, our numbers were doubling every four to, you know, five days, we were getting more and more cases. So I do think, like, putting that into context as well, like, just makes me think a little differently, like, when it was, and what we were looking at, what we were looking like, what mitigation strategies are we going to put into place, too? Not to dismiss what the results were at that time. I don't know what they would be right now. Maybe the same, maybe not.
So, so I just, I just want to clarify, because I think, so when we started down this road, back when I made recommendations, or the administrative team made recommendations in July, we made our recommendations, and the board at that time said that once we reached that 1%, that we would revisit those protocols. So this was never a decision by the administrative team to say, hey, we want to change. And so then, once we got to that point, we as a team were asked to both gather data from our families, gather data from our staff, and look at that data, and make, as we did in July, a proposal to the board. So I don't want it to seem like administration is the, the bad guy, and we came up with all this restrictive stuff, and now, you know, I mean, it, it has felt like, from our perspective, we knew full well that the board was in the driver's seat on this, and we're giving them information to make that decision.
Yeah, and you know, I, I, you know, and when I said that I applaud the administration for putting together the plan, those were not just words that I was throwing out. And I really appreciate all the, all the work that the administrative team and all the teachers have done. But, you know, the one thing that, that I've heard a great deal, and not just from the emails, and yes, the vast majority of, I'm not going to throw a percentage up, but the vast majority of the emails, and certainly the comments that were made at the, at the, the meeting, when we asked parents to be there to, to give us their thoughts, have been, you know, anti-mask, essentially. And there's no way, there's no way of getting around that. But the other thing that we have always said, that whatever policy we, we as a board vote on, and whether it's a 5-0, or 3-2, or 4-0, or whatever the vote count, that we can always come back and review it and look at it again. And I, I fully understand that. But, you know, the one thing that I remember a number of parents saying is, that when we made the decision at the beginning of this school year, to say that we highly recommend the use of masks, and other things that were in, in that, in that policy board decision, that that was one of the main reasons why many parent, where, I'm sorry, while, while, why some parents said that they were going to keep their children in Salem Grade School. So we have been looking at that. We're looking at the numbers. We're looking at education, as well as the safety of our students. And that's, that's what I've heard from, from parents on both sides of the issue.
What we did a year and a half ago, when we, we tasked the administration to come up with a plan on how to get students in the building, they worked very hard to come up with the choice of three different options. And yes, maybe certain families didn't like those particular options, understood, but they were thankful that they got to choose. And I think it's a real slippery slope, especially at a school, to take away that right to choose. And while I agree that we can put some new protocols in place, some sort of level system, we can't remove the right to choose.
Unless it was last.
Unless it was last week.
Unless it was last year, right? So.
There was still a choice last year.
That was a mandate.
They got to choose, there was a mandate, but they got to choose whether they were in the, their kids were in the building, their kids were at home, or a mixture. They got a choice of three things. What we said a year and a half ago, when we approved that plan, was this is amazing, because we are providing families to make a choice.
Then make a motion, Dana.
I want to, I want to continue. I'm not, I don't have a motion to make. I think people are making their, their vote extremely clear. So we can, if you would like to make a motion, go for it, and we'll, we'll make it for sure, and then we can discuss what we do.
Yeah, I'd like to motion to approve the administration's plan, again, understanding, Connie, that this was a recommendation that the board had asked to, to do some research. So again, I'm making a motion to accept the administration's plan for COVID protocol for the remainder of the school year, unless otherwise dictated by the board.
So moved.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The post?
Aye.
No. Motion does not carry. So, going forward, Nick, what does a revised plan look like to you?
That was something that I believe you, Jack, and Steve were going to come to this meeting prepared with, possibly?
Let me rephrase. The recommendation that the administration provided upon our request, that recommendation failed as a motion. It's no longer on the table.
Right.
What I'm asking for is, what if we use that plan as a jumping off point, which I alluded to three weeks ago? What if we talk about altering the percent, or changing the plan, so we do have a motion that carries?
So is that plan available right now?
Nick, what I'm asking.
I don't need to be talked like that, okay?
What I'm asking, Nick, is what would make your plan, what would make you feel better with the plan? How would you like to revise the plan, knowing that that plan?
I think the plan is, by voted to put it in, I think the plan's fine. And honestly, out of the last two years, we'd have only found ourselves in one position that we would even have to recommend going to anything other than an optional situation. So in my mind, if we talk about what I think is rational, and what is, you know, consoling to both situations, I think this plan was very well thought through, and I personally don't see any flaw with it.
I, so I don't think anyone's arguing with the thought that was put in the plan. I think we've all made that clear. What I'm trying to get across is, how can we alter that plan, that the five of us are happier with it, and then we approve it?
I don't have a recommendation for that.
Okay.
I wasn't prepared to do that, and I thought there was going to be other things that were going to be presented to us.
Then let's continue the discussion. So Steve and Ted, you specifically, what would you like to see altered on the plan, or what would, what's, just let's spitball here, what would you guys like to do?
Yeah, let me say this. The current policy in place, I think, in my opinion, and by the way, Nick, I did submit some suggestions with regards to the, the. with regards to the the administration's plans and increase the percentages and the numbers, okay? But also, I I ask, I want to add, just ask the question of other board members. What is it in the current policy in place? Not the one from last year, but the current policy in place for the 2021, 2022 school year? Do we like and not like? Or what is the problem with keeping the current policy in place? And and again, we always we always have an option as a board, and we all know this, that at any time, if 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 numbers increase and and things get bad, that we can always come back and alter the current plan. I'm sorry, the current policy in place, which I think has worked pretty darn well since since the beginning of this school year.
Yes. So I do need to clarify a couple of things, though. If you are going to continue with what we have currently in place, you will need to, number one, approve the indemnification agreement. Because what we currently do is we quarantine students. If the board makes a decision to not quarantine, then we're no longer with the plan we currently have in place. The other aspect of the plan that we currently have in place involves students. If there is a positive student within the classroom that tests positive, then for 10 days following that classroom, those students are required to wear a mask for those 10 days. Again, what I'm asking the board is to determine if that is something that should continue or not. So it's not as simple as continuing with what we've had in place. Some decisions will have to be made by the board related to that.
Okay, Connie, I'm very confused with what you just said. So let me ask the question. With regards to the current policy in place, with regards to what it says about quarantine and things of that nature, what part of that has not worked?
I'm not saying that it hasn't worked. What I'm saying is is we've gotten legal opinion from our attorney that says if we're going to continue to quarantine, we need to have that agreement approved by the board. So we can't continue with the current policy we have in place unless the board approves the indemnification agreement.
Okay, so if we and I have I have read through the indemnification four times. Obviously, we know there's nothing in there that states, as we all know, according to the state Supreme Court, that that any any department of health within any county in the state of Wisconsin can force a school district to shut down. But rather, in reading the indemnification, it's certainly it's reasonable and not just the part of holding harmless and defend and indemnify the district, the board, the officials, the administrators, the agents and employees. But it talks about other aspects. And and I I see nothing wrong with the indemnification and keeping the current policy in place that we have, which yes, does include the quarantine, correct?
Correct. We have present.
Okay. Okay, I understand. I understand that. I've read through it. I understand that, Connie.
And then the other aspect, as I shared with you, is presently when there is a student who tests positive in an elementary grade level classroom, we have required our students to wear a mask for the 10 days following that notification of the positive within the classroom. And so I'm asking for the board's determination as to whether that continues or not.
And that is brought up because you have had parents come to you?
Correct.
Okay. So a reason.
And again, we will, as an administrative team, do whatever the board tells us to do. But I'm asking for a clear answer from the board as it relates to those particular issues.
I think the biggest question is that third third question that Connie has posed to us, right? What happens with those? Because that is a that's a masking situation, like at a point where we're kind of like where we're talking right now, like where do we draw the line? Is there when does it become a mandatory situation, right? Like, that's what Nick asks. That's what is a mandatory situation right now and has helped maybe keep these numbers where they're at.
No, I just I'm feeling a little powerless. You know, I mean, I mentioned that that last meeting meant a lot to me. It did. But I don't think that I was you're interpreting properly what I said. I can't see what your interpretation was. I didn't mean to say that it swayed me. It it made me think. It made me really pay attention to what was going on. And I based a decision on bad information. I based a decision on the information we had that the state could close us down. And so that that top level, where we really tightened things up, well, if we ever got there, we wouldn't have to deal with it. The state will come and do it, but they they can't. And that three percent figure, I know where that came from. And I know how many students that would involve in this school. And I went back and I looked over the policy that was presented by the administration very carefully. It was it was well thought out. Like I said in the first meeting, it was is very comprehensive. But it threw some red flags up for me because of the disinformation we were getting and quite frankly, the anger. It's it's difficult to sit up here and make decisions when you have it coming from from both sides. You know, what do you do? How can you possibly make things work? You can't pull everybody in. It's not going to happen. And like you said, we have to consider the students first. That's our first responsibility. And then then it goes to the staff and and the rest of the people in school. We have to to keep a safe environment. But it's getting very difficult to deal with this. And it's hard to get specific about something when there are so many contracting positions, a different ways kind of going at each other. That's that's hard to do. So right now, I'm feeling a little beat up.
Yeah, it's like one or the other.
Yeah.
And it's.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, and also, you know, and Jack, I agree with you on what you just said. I know the other item on the agenda is the COVID-19 mitigation agreement. And I'm sure everyone on the board has read through that. Is I know that that's not what we're specifically talking about. But since we have, since the the topic of the of the the current policy and the indemnification has been brought up, can we blend into this conversation and look and look at the mitigation aspects of that? Because there are very specific things in the mitigation recommendations for students who are students or staff who become sick. And there's some very important things in that document.
Do you know what he's referring to? Is it the?
It's the.
The two paragraphs that we got from Shayna the other day?
No, I believe what he's referring to is the mitigation agreement that allows the district and Kenosha County Public Health to cooperate as it relates to quarantine.
Right.
Okay, so that's a question of do we want?
Yeah.
So as I shared with you already, our attorney has recommended that if the district is going to continue to do contact tracing and quarantine of students, which is what we have been doing. So again, referring to what we have been doing. They're recommending that we have a joint agreement with Kenosha that both gives the district the authority to do that and also indemnifies the district from doing that.
Connie, with regards to that, Connie, with regards to that, on the first page of the of the agreement between the Salem School District and Kenosha County, as far as indemnification, it says, whereas the district understands that certain mitigation strategies such as close contact investigations and isolation quarantine requirements are vitally important to reducing the spread of COVID-19, must be implemented as soon as possible. So in reading all of it in the indemnification and looking at the mitigation aspects of it, I guess my question would be, what part of that is contrary to the current policy that we have in place? After we sign, if if we agree on signing the agreement between Salem School District and Kenosha County as far as indemnification, which our attorney has recommended? And I've I've read all the emails that you've sent to us, Connie, as far as, you know, from the attorney. And they've been very helpful in that. And also, we'll be looking at the Salem student request for religious accommodation. So, you know, it's not, in my mind, I I had one parent say to me, are you going to do are you going to do something? Are you just going to sit back and not do anything? And I said, I said, I as one board member, and I said, I'm not, I can't speak for the entire board. But I know our board believes in the quality education that our students get, number one, and also to do it in a in a healthy and safe environment and still and still looking at all the aspects and the points of view of of parents who represent a thousand students in our school.
So the question on the table is if we continue our current contact tracing and quarantining, then we sign the legal document? If we don't want to continue quarantining, if we don't want to continue contact tracing, et cetera, then we do not sign the agreement and we change our plan. That's the question.
In other words, the attorney is saying that if you're going to continue doing the quarantine, you should have it would be in the district's best interest legally to have that agreement in place. Without that agreement in place, then the contact tracing, the quarantine of students would not continue. I mean, so we wouldn't, as as an administrative team, we would not have the authority nor the support of the board at that point to do that. So there wouldn't be any reason for us to do that.
Word in a different way, the Kenosha County Health Department would do the contact. They would do their part.
They would because they don't have the time to do.
They don't have the time to do.
To to be fair. So the reason they have indemnification agreements with districts is they don't have the time when they get notified of a positive to do all the contact tracing, to contact all the people, to get into a school and determine who sits where, who are the kids that are closest, who might there be a contact with? They don't have the resources to do that. And so they have, over the last year, have delegated that responsibility to schools. And the vast majority of schools, especially through last year, have just done that. This year, there are many schools that have made a decision not to do that any longer. And so our attorney is recommending, not recommending that we should or shouldn't do. That was not her role. Her role was to say, if you are going to assist the county in that quarantine process, then you need to have the indemnification agreement with them to do that.
So it was it was seeing the meeting, Dana, on what Connie just said, that that when we get to the point of a motion, the next motion, that that it could very well be essentially to maintain the current policy we have in place and to sign the indemnification agreement. That puts it together. Right?
So I wonder if it could be our current policy plus a little bit of the of the recommendation from the administration team? And what if it's a we continue as is, mask is optional until two percent, for example? So then we're talking about twenty-two or right, is that twenty-two, thirty? So what do we we could say it's, you know, twenty-two or twenty-five or, you know, whatever the case number is. And that then is when, okay, now we are making masks mandatory. When or if that time comes, there's going to be things that happen in the meantime. Because the data is not showing that it's spreading in the schools. The data is also not showing that the kids who are quarantined, they aren't coming down with it. So again, whatever we have in our school, in all the schools, it just doesn't. It's not running rampant in the school. So instead of removing that choice from families, it's a you still have your choice. When we get up higher, then you know what? We're all on the same page because everywhere in Kenosha is up. And then that number is.
If we're going to explore that, I think masking is a part of this, right? It's a part of the conversation. But it's the only part of the mitigation strategies that we heard any feedback on other than the survey. So we don't know what's working and what's not working right now. It could be how teachers spread their kids out in their class or not spread. Like, there's other things in the proposal from the administrative team.
Absolutely. I'm not saying that we're doing nothing. We're doing.
Right. And there's a lot of things happening, but I don't know if it's just masking if we hit that two percent or if it's masking plus some of the other mitigation strategies as well.
Like nomads or particulars.
Whatever those that, yeah. Contain kids, not contain kids, launch strategies, all of those other things that are, you know, that were in that proposal.
And again, knowing those particular numbers, we didn't reach that last year. And even when we were at our highest, however, many weeks ago, we came down extremely quickly. So understood that even in that previous recommended plan, we wouldn't have even hit the next level. Understood, but it's still, then let's push that number out. Then let's make it twenty-two, twenty-five. Nothing is saying that we can't call a meeting again and say, nobody's stepping in from higher above. Well, I'm not feeling comfortable with seeing how the data is showing with now it looks like a classroom did spread. Now we're proved different. Now let's make a change.
So are you saying that you want to take the? If I'm hearing you correctly and through my ears, so I'm hearing what I want to think, you're saying to accept the plan that the administration put out, but kick the percentage up?
I don't I don't know if. I don't want to.
I think you're wrong. I don't know.
No, 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 that's good. It's I don't I don't want to painstakingly go through those subbullets under that. I think it could be as simple as we like the plan. We don't like the percentages.
Yeah.
Let's let's we do a motion on twenty-two or twenty-five kids, whatever, you know, whatever that number is. And then we take it back to Connie and say, can you just put something together on where these things now fall?
Because I think that was one of the things Steve was talking about was increasing the percentage number. And I actually sent something like that the next day, saying, take that one percent to one and a half.
Yep, so both you and Steve provided something very similar, basically kicking up that number. And I think it's a instead of doing one point something, let's.
Eliminate the yellow, essentially.
I don't remember what each of them are.
Of the Great Asian, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
And and maybe that's all it is. Maybe it's just we are in yellow now and yellow is you get to choose. And when we hit orange, then it's, yes, we know that the health department can't shut us down, but they can certainly quarantine us for two weeks. So so it's they still have that. But if we kick it in at twenty-two, first of all, everyone's going to know what's going on. Because Salem isn't a bubble. It's reflective of everything else that is going around. So it could be two percent.
And twenty-two, you're talking about a sustained.
Cases.
Cases, not like a blip after Labor Day.
Well, and then it's that same thing.
But it's that window of time.
I I don't remember the wording. It's once it's at that level for five days, right, Connie? Correct?
Yeah, there were five, there was five days and there was another that was 10 days. And I was a little confused on that myself. But Dana, if I'm hearing you correctly, in addition to to what you just said, would that also include then signing the indemnification agreement with the county health department?
I would not be opposed. Okay, let me word it this way. I would be in favor of Connie not spending her time contact tracing. I would be comfortable with some sort of communication going out to a K through five classroom saying, you, your child could have been exposed. going out to a K through five classroom, saying, you, your child could have been exposed. It is your choice. If you come to school, you wear a mask for 10 days. If you stay home, you will be allowed to stay home. But those names are not provided to the health department. If the data shows suddenly that the last year and a half, or the year, whatever, is no longer accurate, and we do need to go back to quarantining, that can happen really quick. We already have the plan, we already have the legal document, and then we can say, okay, we will give you the names again.
Names of close contacts, you're saying, right?
The contact tracing, and the, the time that Connie spends doing that, it would basically turn into, a letter will go out, but you still, families have the choice, because our data is showing, our local data that we have at our school, is showing that even the kids sent home, so they're not in the school, they are not coming down with it. We do not, there's nothing to show that. Go ahead, Steve.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, and, and if you look at the indemnification agreement under 2A, when the district becomes aware that an individual who has been, who has been on school property and is suspected of having COVID-19, the county hereby authorizes the district, through a school-based healthcare provider, to independently conduct contact tracing, so on and so forth. So, that means that, that we would contract with some organization, some entity, and that's what that indemnification allows us to do. I'm not saying we couldn't have done that otherwise at some other point, but that's part of the district contact tracing investigations, where we would ask another entity to do that, so Connie and the administrators are not, and the other administrators are not doing it themselves.
That is not my understanding of that, and there is no...
Connie, I just read this exactly, what it says here.
There is no entity that I know of that does contact tracing in schools.
So, we can certainly...
So, my understanding was always that they would train, which they have, trained the administrative team, or whoever you determine, your nurse, whoever it is, to do the contact tracing and determine who those students are that would be quarantined. Again, what the board decides to do on this is the board's decision. It is a fair amount of work to do that. The intent behind it is to prevent the spread of COVID. Have we seen spread? Possible this year. There are a couple cases that are suspect, but we also have been quarantining as soon as. Did any of those students that we quarantined then test positive after a couple? Again, though, could they have gotten that from outside? Absolutely.
And that's where it's, you can't track where a virus comes from.
So, you know, there's, there's no way to know that. So, you know, again, you know, it is not, and I can take it back to Dana, but it is, or to Shayna, but it is not my understanding with the quarantine that we would be contracting with another agency to do the contact tracing.
Anything else?
I've been looking at the plan. Yellow indicator, 1%. Orange indicator, 2%. If we kept this the way it's written, and took the yellow indicator to 2%, we might never get out of yellow and get to orange. And yellow, although it's somewhat restrictive, is a safe way to go. I, I, I would consider voting for this if we could kick each percentage up one point on the plan.
So, mask optional until 2% or 22 cases?
Isn't that where we've been at? We're in, we've been in yellow all year.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, now, so I think the importance of doing something, which, again, Nick is in agreement too, of let's do something, let's just, let's put a topper on it.
Didn't we get to orange?
Not the way it's...
We never were in, we weren't in orange for the five consecutive...
So, the plan required that we be in orange for five days.
So, we were in orange for five days?
No.
No.
Four days.
So, we were in orange for four days. So, we never would have gone into that orange level under the plan that was presented. We would not have gone into it last year. We would not have gone into it yet this year.
That's like running into the gas station when you're on empty. You know, it's...
Came pretty close.
But that was the intent, was that it would address this concern that you had a, you know, very likely, probably Labor Day weekend, and that things would level out. And that why, it was also never the intent that once you moved up to a level, that you would stay there, based on if your numbers went down, you would move out on that.
Well, I'd like to try to resurrect this, because I think it's a good plan, but it's obviously not gonna make it the way it's written now. It just, we did vote it down twice. So, if we can make that change, and put this through, and use a plan that's very comprehensive, make it work, and I hate to see all the work that you guys go to waste, it, it would be a good step towards setting something in, in stone. So, this is what we're doing now. We are making something happen. Opinion?
And again, it puts a topper on. So, it's a, we're following law. We can meet, within 24 hours, meet whenever we need to. That is not something that's being prevented. It's a, based on the data that, you know, specifically Connie put in the deck, it's a, yes, we wouldn't have reached that number, but let's still raise it, and the, our year and a half, our year and some change of data, let's, let's adjust the number.
So, so with regards to the numbers, in the, in the suggested changes that are, that I call revised proposal suggestions, changing the numbers, so for yellow, but not greater than 15, 1.5% for five consecutive days, the orange indicator, 1.8% or 18 or greater active cases for five consecutive days.
No, so that's, that's not, that wasn't the recommended plan?
Right, right.
Oh, so are you suggesting these numbers instead?
Yeah, I mean, using the higher, I mean, I agree with what Jack just said. And, and also the number of days, I, I know we, we, we talked about it at a previous meeting, five days versus 10 days. Connie, those numbers, when the administrative staff came up with the, with those days numbers, on what basis were the, were those recommendations made?
They were made based on a cycle of students testing positive. So, if you, if you, if you have significant spread, waiting 10 days, for example, while your numbers are going up and up and up, it, it is difficult then, all of a sudden, within a couple days, to change that. And so, the idea was, is that we didn't want it to be a blip, but we also didn't want it to be such an extensive period of time that all of a sudden we were up into the next level before we had a chance to do anything in the one level.
Okay.
So, I've been sitting here for 20, 25 minutes, just really trying to listen to what everyone's been talking about. And first, very openly, shame on the government for making us have to make these kind of decisions at this kind of level, period, in my mind.
Oh, wow.
And I say that because I'd much rather be talking about school curriculum, about enriching our student, students with learning, about how to make this school a better place. So, I think it's kind of shameful that we, as a school board, have to make these kind of health decisions. And I'll say that on top of a mountain. I think it's, it's tough, because who are we? We're just a bunch of people. None of us have doctors in front of our names. Well, some of us do, two of you, I guess, you know. But what I'm saying is, we, we are not medical professionals. We are invested people in our community that really want our kids to succeed to a level that we can't imagine. I'm tired of this getting in the way of my children's education. I'm tired of this being the overall agenda that we, as a board, have to talk about often. Part of the decision of me supporting the original plan, and I'm in support of something, is that if I go to the doctor, I listen to their recommendation. If I conduct a conversation with the administration of the school that they're in several hours a day, and sometimes above what they're contracted to be here, I take what they say as they're my doctor, and I'm following their recommendation. So, when I see the changes of the numbers, I wonder where that impetus came from, and I'm okay with that. But really, at the end of the day, I don't want to drag this, drag this in any longer. I really want to start focusing in on our children's education, achievement, and making the school better. And to be honest, I've never felt so polarized on this board in the several years that I've been than I do tonight. And we need to get this done tonight and move on, because I'm done talking about this. And I want my kids to achieve this gap that is now a year and a half. My, 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 my six-year-old's in first grade, and he's barely able to read his letters, right? Has a hard time spelling his name appropriately. And that's no fault of anyone's, that's just the society we live in. But that's what I want to focus in on. So, if we put some sort of plan in place, so I don't have to think about this anymore, and I can start worrying about the important things, like our children's education, and the ability of our staff to do their job correctly, that's why I originally wanted to approve this, because like I said, if I went to a doctor, I listened to their recommendation about my health. And yes, I have a choice about that. Now, I'm not saying that they are pushing anything onto us, this was a recommendation. But who am I to come up with any other numbers, other than what they came, they're live, they pretty much live here. They're here more than they're in their homes. So, when I think about that, that's what is super, you know, and I don't agree with everything the administrations have done in the past, or current, or future, probably, but I would say this is not an unreasonable suggestion. And I'm okay with any reasonable suggestion, but what I've been hearing for the last 25 minutes is a lot of buzziness, back and forth on litigation, indemnification. I mean, that's words we use in my industry, that we shouldn't be talking in a board meeting, an open board meeting at that.
Well, you know, let me interject. You know, first of all, I, I resent the implication that by looking at options, is not looking out for the education of our students or the health. Dana, let me ask you this question, then. Since we already voted down again the administrative recommendations, then it would seem to me that, that with, with that, with, with the voting down of that, that like anything, we, in my mind at least, as, as someone who, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a medical doctor, but I'm, I'm an educator, I've been in public education for over 30 years, I'm a parent, like all of us. So, if we voted down the recommendations of the administration that was originally presented, then in my mind, it would seem that the current policy for 2021, 2022, and I said this before, is still in place with the ability of our board to also sign off on the indemnification. Am I, am I correct in that wide-ranging assumption there?
I, I do not know the question that was asked.
Can we hold the policy and just sign off on the indemnification?
Thank you, Jack. That's what I was, because, because the board has already voted down the administrative recommendation.
In its present form. But I feel like we are coming to some consensus on some action.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, so the reality is, the board was having a discussion. That's, that's what boards do. I also would love to stick a sharp object in my eye. This is, this is not fun to discuss. Nobody is saying it is. It's also, this is also the most polarized I've seen the board as well. And it's interesting to, to Nick, hear you passionately explain your view, and for me to be able to so easily switch it around and say, I can get 10 recommendations saying the same thing, but I'm the mom, and I get to decide what happens with my kids. And that's the stance. It's a, I don't want a higher government telling me what to do. I don't want to tell these parents what to do. I want to say to them, you get to make a choice. We are doing our part here, but the choice is yours, whether you opt in or out, and the choice is yours, whether you decide to keep your child home, if there was a possible, or if you know your child has already had it, or whatever is, you get to make the choice. That is what I am in favor of.
Yeah, I hear you, Dana. I really do. I get that. I don't, I just don't agree necessarily that our job should be particularly making healthcare-type of decisions about the kids in our, yeah, but that also has kind of a double-edged blade to it, right? Because we are also on a board, which we do have to make that decision. So, we do have to also listen to input that we may not necessarily agree with, but we also have to act upon that. And I think in this democracy that we live in, generally, the, the larger vote gets the key, right? And just like, you know, so what I'm guessing, you know, I just can't help but to ignore the several emails that we did get in for masking. And I'm not, you catch me outside of here, you're probably not gonna catch me with a mask on unless the store says I have to. I respect their business. However, in this particular situation, it's a lot different than just being out. It's, you're in small, you're in classrooms, you're very, you know, for hours on time. It's just different, right? And I'm not, and I, I'm not saying that I'm in support of full masking 24/7/365.
Just for the eight hours that...
What we're straying away from here is that I heard you say, I want choice, but then you sounded optimistic about putting some sort of plan in place. And I'm confused about your position, because if it's the parent choice, even if we put something in place here, based on your position, I guess I'm just kind of confused about what's...
Well, it's, it's called compromise. So, it's a, I agree that parents should have their choice. Once we get up to 22 or 25 cases, there's a problem going around in Kenosha County, not even just Salem. So, what it shows is, we met these two times painstakingly, and what the five of us came up with is, we want that percentage too. That is when the light switch goes on, and we say to families, you put on masks, because we don't even know where it's coming from anymore. But my guess is, something will happen before that has to be kicked in.
Well, I'm just gonna be a bystander, then, at this point, and if I have some input I can put in, I mean, that's it.
Great. That, I mean, that's how this works. So, it's a, anybody who wants to talk.
So, what's, are we doing something, or are we not doing something?
I would like to, I would like to make a motion. I move to keep the current 2021, 2022 policy in place and sign the indemnification agreement.
So, moved? It is not seconded, so it is no longer an active motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Right.
I'd like to take one last chance at this policy. I would like to approve this policy based on a 1% increase in every single area. Yellow goes from 1 to 2, orange goes from greater than 1 to greater than 2, and red goes from greater than 2 to greater than 3. To get the numbers up higher, but take the policy as it's written.
So, that would...
It would keep the policy intact, but it would take all the percentage numbers up by one point.
Okay.
I think...
Actually, so moved. Let's wait if there's a second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Well, isn't there a discussion period?
Apologies. Oh, sorry, I was excited. Okay.
Only, Jack, I'm looking at the yellow, which is what we're in. That essentially is the current policy, right?
Right now.
So, I think what he's saying is, you go from 1% to 2%, or 3% to 4%.
But I don't think we can adjust the yellow. That is our, that's where we're at, right? Like, that's, we can't make yellow group back down to green.
Correct. So, it's, it's expanding. It's, so it's, it's wording. I think it just needs to be scrubbed a little bit. There's a ton of subbullets under it. I think it's a, it's a, what if, like, the personnel committee or something needs, and we just quickly go and we just quickly go through those particular subbullets to make sure that they now make sense with changing the number? What if it's a, we approve a plan for 2%? We will determine what those, what those are. So instead of approving a plan with the changes, we can say, we approve it at 2% and we will meet as committee or whatever.
It says not greater than 11, but then it says 1%. So the 11 would have to be changed to 22.
Yep.
So adjusting the numbers to represent the higher percentage rate.
3% would be 3%.
Correct.
I don't know if that's a difficult change, and I think it would make this policy more edible.
So not going through the subpoints? Are we not as concerned about that? Do we just want to?
I think we have to, right, because there's quarantining in some of these subpoints.
That's another motion. But yes, so it would be.
I mean, we're talking, if we get to orange, we're talking now 30, 33 kids, right? To go to orange, right, which is when we're starting to talk about some of these, these effective quarantining methods. And again, I'm, I'm willing to compromise on some sort of plan. And that, to me, is compromising to that, because at 33, you know, uh.
But at 33, we could be quarantined for two weeks, not shut down, quarantined. So we could certainly change the wording of, we will act as if that 3% still exists. So it's a, 2% is when we, we get it kicked in with more masks, more stringency, and then at 33, it's still red because we could, we're most likely quarantined for two weeks.
I, I guess my thought process too on that is, my whole standpoint is making sure my kid's in the school as much as possible.
Agreed.
I'm not a big fan of the quarantine. I understand it, but I'm not a huge fan of it. And I think the quarantining curriculum is just, you know, you get back in the classroom and you're almost two weeks behind because of the learning process that everyone else in the class got. And I know that's difficult for the school to compensate for, for sure, right? I do know that last year, we had a pretty effective program where it was only close contacts, and I think this is still what that's talking about. And I'm for not quarantining an entire class. I'm for quarantining close contact, and obviously that takes a little bit more work. And then in that close contact, if you're chosen to quarantine, if you get a negative COVID test, that you're allowed to come back to school. I don't know if that coincides with any kind of, because I think that's just rational thought process.
Yep, so what that is, you can certainly, uh, let me know. What that tells me is that we don't want to sign that, and we want to handle it ourselves.
I'm not a huge fan of the quarantine as I'm currently stuck in with my kids, so, um, I, I just.
But your situation is different because you had positives in your house.
Oh, but if we're talking about 33 cases, now we're starting to kind of talk about how what my household is is starting to happen with everyone, and that's the problem, right? That's the conundrum.
Oh, let's say that your boys come down with it, they wouldn't be on the list because they weren't at school.
Well, based upon the current quarantining guidelines, they don't necessarily have to come back with a negative pot COVID test as long as they meet the 10 days prior to having any symptoms after the 14-day period.
But then it's 10 days from their onset.
Correct.
So that supersedes whatever we would do here.
Well, that's mandated by the health department that you have to do at that point, correct?
We, we're saying the same thing.
Right.
So if we don't sign that indemnification, then what we're saying is, we are going to handle what we do with quarantining. So close contacts, you will get a letter saying, this is your choice. Wear a mask for 10 days or stay at home.
I just want to clarify, the advisement from the attorney said that there is some legal risk in doing that.
The other option is, we don't send any letter. Right. And I understand that we're a school and we, we keep things safe and we do that, but again, it's, it's following the data. And does, does Woodman's do that? Does, you know, so it's that kind of situation where, you said it yourself, Nick, we don't wear our masks outside of here. So we can't control what any of these kids do, because that is up to the parents. It's their choice to take their child to wherever they want to take them. So if they pick up a virus from outside and come in, it doesn't mean they got it at the school.
Here's the real honesty. If there's not a parent in this school that hasn't told their kid, if they had a sniffle, just don't say anything and go to school, right? I mean, we'll just be practical on that.
But a sniffle is not.
I know, but for some people, it may be, right? And that's, that's the slope, right? And that's what's crazy about this and the fact that we have to think about every single hypothetical and try to make everyone happy with us, which isn't, isn't going to happen.
But what is, what about the sniffle, though?
Well, what I'm saying is, let's say, in that particular situation, we give the parent who is truly doesn't have any other option other than to send their kid to school, in their mind, ignores kind of a symptomatic type of situation that ends up being COVID, and then all of a sudden, we have a class outbreak because we didn't take appropriate action. So that's, that's the conundrum that we have then with that as well, and I understand both ends of that. So what's tough about that is I don't want quarantining. But in the same case, left two parents to decide whether or not to send their kids to school or not, if they were in close contact, 100 times out of 100, they're going to send their kid. And that's including myself probably, right? Which is tough.
But I would say, no, I, I wouldn't. Because I know that we're in a pandemic, and if I have a child who even has a slight temperature, I'm going to say, I don't want to be that mom who sends my kid to school with a fever.
Well, I mean, I don't think any parent wants to send their kid to school sick, we're, we're talking about people who have had close contact in quarantining type of situations, right?
But.
I call the vote. There's a motion on, on the deck right now, and it's been seconded. I call the vote. Either let's support it or let's put it down and send it in one other direction.
I, I think, Jack, there's an interesting piece, though, that quarantine, the quarantine piece has to be untangled from this.
The motion needs to include both pieces. We can't leave tonight without deciding both.
Right, we have, there's, there's the, the recommendation from the administrative team that we're discussing with the, the percentages, but there's also this quarantine piece that we have to address because one way or another, we have to either sign or not sign the indemnification agreement. So I think we have to untangle these things.
Connie, in the event that we choose not to sign that indemnification, how much more difficult, or are we already in the process of handling, because you said the health department just does not have the resource? So either way, we're burdened with the task of kind of monitoring the situation as a district, correct?
If we're going to quarantine, yes. If we're not going to quarantine, it becomes very simple. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious, but it becomes very simple because when a student has positive, the student has positive. Nothing else from the school perspective happens.
Because the health department says they have to quarantine or self-isolate or whatever the case may be.
Correct, and we are not doing that anymore.
I guess, so I'm clear, if, if, if we vote on the proposal and, which means also increasing the numbers or the percentages, uh, then all the, all of the current bullet points under each of those color designations are part of the motion, is that correct?
The quarantine part, that has to apply.
Except the quarantine part. And then, and then that gets into the whole issue, Ted, as you were just talking about, the indemnification piece.
My suggestion is, we continue discussing until we feel comfortable with if we want to sign the document or not. And then, I think we make a nice tidy motion that includes the levels or the percentages, and if we're quarantining or not.
I withdraw my motion.
So Ted, I'm just going to call you up, what are your thoughts on quarantine, uh, quarantining as it is now?
So it's not whether we quarantine, it's whether the district cooperates and assists Kenosha County in the quarantine process.
Words matter, yes. So whether Connie continues to contact trace, which she does around, it's not full classrooms, it's based on who's around, who was at lunch, whatever else.
And whether they're wearing masks. So if a student is wearing a mask, we have not been quarantining them.
And then you communicate with each family, or you tell?
So we send, we communicate with families where the student is quarantined. Um, and then that family will come in and pick those kids up at that point. And then we follow up with a letter, and then we communicate with the families that are in the elementary grade level. So let's say a kindergarten classroom and say, because kids interact all the time in a kindergarten class, we can't say that there wasn't an exposure, but you're not considered a close contact, you're not in quarantine. However, we have then taken that class and required students in that class to wear masks for the next 10 days because we simply aren't able to say, is this a, is this for sure a close contact or not? Um, in the case of quarantining students, we go into and look to see, is that student a student who routinely wears a mask also? Um, and again, I know there's lots of different opinions about masks, but our direction has been that if they're wearing a mask, that they would not be considered a close contact.
Right, and with regards to that, in the orange, in the orange category, as it states now, uh, one of the bullet points, only students who were unmasked will be recommended for quarantine if they are considered close contacts. So, uh, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that can certainly change to, if, if we don't sign it, then it's a, a potentially, of course, a letter to the whole class if it's kindergarten or close contacts if it's middle school, saying, uh, your child may have been exposed. You, you decide.
Take whatever measures you feel appropriate.
Yes.
Right, um, if, if you could clarify, anyone on the board clarify for me, uh, uh, the, the upside and the downside of approving the motion that was already been taken off the table, although I didn't hear the second say that he would take it off the table. But, um, with that current motion, what the upside and downside would be if we passed a resol, a motion like that with the changes in the numbers and sign the indemnification? The upside and downside of the indemnification agreement and approving and voting on a policy?
So if I'm understanding the, the question, the upside of not signing it is that parents get the choice, they are not instructed to, to quarantine, because they will be recommended to quarantine, which then the, the county health will put them in quarantine.
Okay.
There's nothing here that says that they have to go to quarantine, it's all recommended.
And that is because health departments can quarantine, school districts recommend to quarantine. That's what we're changing, that we would no longer recommend students to the health department.
Two bullet points. One orange, one yellow, all right?
They're the same thing.
Yep, so I don't, I don't know what, what those details are in there. And that's where I, I think we can pass a motion saying, we will take it to committee or we will take it to whatever, scrubbing those following things. The main point is, we want the levels to start at 2%.
So.
And.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And it's the indemnification, so it's a, and in addition to that 2%, we want to no longer recommend for quarantine. That we will take that in-house, and we will send the letters, and we will again let the families choose on if they then want to keep their child home or if they are still okay sending their child to school.
So Madam President, the question would be then, based on, and this, this is also a question for you, Connie, uh, based on what the attorney, the attorney who represents our school district, how would that, uh, um, what, how does that play into the recommendations that she has made or the suggestions in the communications with you?
If I'm understanding what you're suggesting, Dana.
I thought I was very clear in what I said.
Yep, so as our attorney.
So Dana, what you are saying is, you would want the district to continue to contact trace, but just not quarantine students.
I, I could be using different terminology, I don't know, but it's.
So, I mean, the contact tracing is, you walk into the classroom, you see where the student's sitting, you look to see who the close contacts are, okay? So what I'm understanding you to say is, the district would continue in-house to do contact tracing. There just would be no quarantine.
There would be no recommendation.
There would be no required quarantine, there would just be a notification to families that your student, your child may be in close contact, and you decide whether to quarantine.
And I think it's you guys decide if you want to quarantine, and also if you've already opted out of a mask, then continue opting out of that.
Then to answer your question, Steve, in terms of the legal aspect of that, is that Shayna did share that there is some risk in doing that. So in other words, you as a district are saying that your child is potentially a close contact.
Sort of possibly, maybe, yeah.
So then if, for example, that student then does, very unlikely that they do, but then does come down positive, it could potentially be said the district did not take measures then to protect that child.
Right, and that's where the indemnification agreement would come into play when it says at the end that, uh, that the, the administrative staff and everyone else are indemnified, et cetera, et cetera.
So it's saying that if we sign it, we continue to recommend for quarantine, and we're off the hook if somebody sues us.
Right.
And that's great, legal advice, and, and yes, definitely sign it. But you can also flip it the other way and say, we're still being responsible. Nothing's changed, the data is showing that it is not spreading in our classrooms. That, that's what it's showing. We're also seeing, you could speculate that the ones that are quarantined, it's not, they're not getting it either. I feel that the data would show differently.
Right, and, and, and this goes back to the comment, Nick, that you made. Our role as a board and doing all these things, and, you know, obviously, we're, we're still just as concerned about every aspect of education at all levels at our school. But yes, you know, uh, not having the gov, the higher levels of government telling us exactly what we have to do. And, and so, you know, that's, that's the delicate balancing that all of us as elected board members have to deal with.
But that, but I would say that that's the benefit of having the, the lowest level of government making that choice, because instead of somebody who's never been to Salem is making a decision, then each individual family is.
Right, and that's why we have local control.
And that is the plan of, let's, let's pursue that as a positive, and let's put the messaging out. Let's, let's put our foot down more and say, you guys have been doing really well. Don't send your kid in if they don't feel good. But I would say, I think parents are doing that. I, I believe that they are, because numbers would be different, the data would show differently. Would I send my child if they didn't feel good? Heck no. And I know plenty of other mothers, I get it, I'm, I'm the female up here. It would not happen. Now, if it turns out to not be COVID, I don't care, the rule still is, you don't send your kid until they've been fever-free for 24 hours. So I don't, I don't see that as being a reason to take away that choice.
So I just, I, I just want to get clarification, though, because as you start pulling things out of the plan that was proposed, there really isn't a plan anymore. So I, I, there's a, there's a piece of me that says, this is really, number one about masking, so let's move the numbers up far enough that we don't have to worry about masking kids. And, and with all due respect, if the board doesn't want to mask kids, don't mask kids. I mean, none of us is sitting here saying this is what you have to do. If you pull a quarantine piece out of this plan, once again, it, it really, the plan, for the most part, doesn't exist anymore. And so I guess I, I'm just saying to you, don't make a decision out of platitudes. Make a decision because you believe that those aspects of the plan make a difference in whether kids get COVID or not. kids get COVID or not. Otherwise, it's just, it's to say to people, we got a plan.
It's just a plan, right.
And, and I don't, to me, that doesn't make sense for kids. So i- if you're going to pull those aspects because you don't agree or you believe that a parent should make those decisions, that's good, but then don't suggest that there's some mitigation plan, because there's not anymore, once you pull those things out.
Okay, so, so here, here is it bottled down to one question. Do we even put a top percentage in place?
It's a point.
Right, so that's what you're getting at. So I think we were more focused on, this is a great plan, let's just up the numbers. Instead, it could be, we are keeping our current plan of masks are optional, period. What we are changing is we are doing our own contact tracing and communicating, that we won't be recommending kids for quarantine. We will trust our families to make decisions that don't impact your community, that we can each be responsible within our families to say, we are doing our part. You're still going to Woodman's, you're still going to Action Territory, whatever you're doing, but know that you are coming to school, and don't come to school when you don't feel good. And again, it's
So Dana, based on what you just said, a very simple question, if, if, if the board were to vote on what you just said, would you also support signing the indemnification? Very simple question.
No, I, I think I'm correct, I do not agree with signing the indemnification.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So if, if we don't want to put that top item, that top percentage in place, it could be, let's continue as-is, changing, not signing the indemnification, if that's what we agree. And then it's a, if the numbers start going higher and the data that we're watching is showing that it's spreading in these particular classrooms more at a rapid rate, or the not quarantining isn't working, or those types of things, then we meet within 24 hours and we say, you know what, we got to change some things now. But that is more reactive. So is it a, do we want to be proactive in a, you know, this is our plan and this is the stop sign? Proactive in saying, we choose choice? Or are we reactive and say, when this happens, we will have a meeting? That's not reactive, that's still, it's still a
I think we did pretty good last year. And even though I'm not necessarily a fan of it, I applaud the district for staying open and not going to virtual learning all last year, and that's with using the methods that have been provided through the Kenosha County Health Department. I'm personally going to be in favor of signing it. And I say that because Connie does bring up a good point, you can't have
I've been sitting too long when these
Yeah, you're good. A plan is only as good as the entirety of it generally, right? So that does make sense to me. Not saying that's what she's recommending, but it, that, that does make sense to me, that's, that makes sense. So that being said, I also agree with the idea of having a plan, not just to wave it around like it's a big shiny piece of paper, but actually having it mean something, because what good is having a plan if it's never meant to be used? And it's just more or less to say, hey, here it is. So I also agree with that, too.
But there's still a plan of mask
Well, let me finish here, Dana.
So if I heard you correctly, Nick, that besides supporting a, the plan or a plan, you also support signing the indemnification agreement?
I do, reluctantly, but I do.
Because you want the quar, you want the quarantining to continue? You want the kids
In my mind, that's using common sense in an area right now that is unprecedented and we're learning how to work with it. It makes sense to me if that makes people feel safe, and it keeps my school open, and it keeps my kids in the class for the most part. Sometimes we'll have to be on the butt end of that, and I was last year. But generally speaking, my kids were mainly in their school all last year without interruption. And if that means that we have to continue doing that, then I'm in favor of that, reluctantly, but I'm, I'm in favor of it, because ultimately, my kids are in, their butts are in the seats.
I do want to clarify that we have significantly narrowed down the number of kids that we quarantine, and that's where that contact tracing
Which when we started last year, it was entire classroom, and it went down to very close contact for five minutes, within six feet of, yeah, so, like, that, that's sensible, that's common sense thought process, I think, right? In these crazy times. I also do agree, you know, you already know where I stand on what I think the plan should be, but I'm also willing to compromise, and then hopefully maybe tune it up a bit more, because I don't want to leave here without something being done personally. I don't think it's responsible to just leave how things have been personally. And that's just how I feel that I can best put my input into the school district, right, wrong, or indifferent, and people are going to have opposing views to that.
It's just, it's really tricky, because there is a plan in place, and I think that's where, where we're just getting hung up, like
So let me, okay, so we have a plan, I am in favor of making that plan more stalwart.
So you want an additional something in place?
I want to have common sense measures that when our school gets to a point
I think what Nick is saying is what you said before, like, a stoplight, like, at some threshold, right?
Yeah, we got to recognize when we have a problem
A proactive stoplight instead of trying to meet
100%, I don't want to be reactive.
Okay. I too don't want to be reactive, but it's also interesting that Connie is recommending not even putting anything in place. It's just, it's just a point, right? Like, recommendations are all over the place.
I'm not sure I'm saying not even putting anything in place.
It's just that the plan doesn't
I'm saying if you take out the masking aspect at a certain level, if you take out the quarantine at a certain level, having, the plan collapses on itself. I mean, there is nothing in that plan that would have a significant impact on slowing the spread, once you take those two aspects out. And again, I understand people disagree on whether those have an impact on it, but the measures that exist, once you pull those two out, really don't have any significant impact on slowing the spread. And so, I, I guess I question the value of a plan that really doesn't do anything.
A plan for the sake of a plan is just noise. So it's, so let's figure out, as a board, do we want to sign the indemnification or not? Should we do a motion on that particular piece? And then we could take it to what plan we then agree to?
That's fair.
That is fair. A motion just on the indemnification?
Okay, so somebody make that motion.
Mine aren't working today.
I motion that we sign the indemnification form in conjunction with the Kenosha County Health Department for quarantining and self-isolation purposes.
Recommended for quarantine, yep. Some moved?
Second. Steve Brown, second.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Okay, so we could then say, the plan, somebody can make the motion on, we have a plan of creating an orange level starting at 22 cases.
So there is one other aspect of that then. So remember, I shared with you as a board, our current practice, when a student has positive within a classroom, is that that class then is required to wear a mask for the 10 days following.
The class, meaning kindergarten through fifth?
Yeah, so we don't do that with seventh grade classes. Those kids are
Connie, Connie, is that, is that currently the case with the current policy in place?
That is what current practice has been. I, I would hesitate
Current practice or policy?
Practice. That's why I'm asking the board to approve that as a policy. So the practice has been, if, let's say we're talking about a kindergarten classroom, a student has positive in that classroom, because the concept of close, close contacts is so difficult to do when you've got kids, which we want them to do, sitting on a carpet and listening to a story, interacting in the classroom in small groups and doing all those things. We have moved pretty significantly away from social distancing among our youngest kids, because we know that that significantly impacts their learning. So what we've done, rather than the heavy contact tracing, is to say that as an added layer of protection, again, recognizing that people don't agree, that the students in that classroom would wear a mask for the next 10 days after a positive case in the classroom. So that's been our practice. What I'm asking the board then is to determine, should we continue with that practice or not? Because we've been challenged on that multiple times since our last board meeting. And so I'm asking the board then to either say, yes, that's what we're going to do, or no, that's not what we're going to do, so that we can let parents know what it is we're
In my mind, that's probably common sense practice.
You're going to have to clarify, because ours don't match. So what's common sense practice?
I mean, did you just hear Connie? So, okay, I motion to approve the practice into policy for masking after there's a positive class case for 10 days.
Some moved?
Second.
Again, you're taking away that choice. Again, you're basically asking for religious exemptions, you're asking for parents to be upset because we're making their decisions instead of them and their family.
So be it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, Steve Brown, nay.
Motion fails. So what that says is, we will provide the choice if there's a close contact within the smaller grades. Okay. Now I think what's left on the, do you have anything else? Or do we just need to decide on the plan?
Well, we still got to figure a plan if we're going to do a plan.
I, I was asking if Connie had a different thing that she needed an answer on.
So initially, one of the things that I brought to the board's attention was, if at any point, there was a decision to require masking, then the board would also have to determine a process for requesting an exemption from that. Okay, so my understanding of the last failed motion did not require any masking, so there is no need to do the religious exemption for masking at this point.
Unless we
At some point, if a plan is approved, that requires masking at any level, whether it's 20%, 3%, whatever it is, then the board would need to make a determination as to whether they would offer a religious exemption and what the process for that would be. So at this point, it's a non-issue, because there is nothing where there is mandatory masking, from what I understand.
Okay, so that could be one motion or multiple motions?
I don't think we need a motion.
If we want to, if we want to do a two, if we want to put a
Oh, the percentage
We're moving ahead with the plan, yes.
It's not moving ahead with the plan, it's a, do we change it starting at 2%? And then it's a discussion of some other time, those sub-bullets can be reviewed.
Well, I would like to actually take maybe the proposed idea, this could be from either Steve or whatever the case is, instead of one to two and two to three, three to four, maybe go from one to 1.5, 1.5 to two, to, let's, let's narrow that gap a little bit, in my mind. So then we're still above the original recommendation, but we're below what the motion was passed, or motion was given to by Jack before. So it's a compromise to the, to both of us.
It's a compromise to the compromise. So it's, so that's when it just starts getting into point percentages. I mean, it's, it's, we're either going to do this or not. So I think it's a, if we keep having these levels, it's going to be a, okay, where are we at now? What's entitled in this?
That's about my confusion from the get-go, where we're getting the numbers from.
Great, so there's really no difference then, if we just have it at two or 1.2. It's a number, it's arbitrary.
Or one, or two, and three, right, exactly.
Which is what it was at, and then it, it needs to be stated that that plan was not approved.
Oh, right, I'm just
So it still comes to, do we want to take a stance of, let's move this up one whole percentage, because we, that's how much we want a choice to be made, or do we screw around with 1.3 and 1.7, when who's going to be able to keep track of that? It's more time and energy on the administration team.
If we make a motion for a specific point change, and it doesn't pass, the next step would be to maybe change that. But we have to move forward with something tonight.
Agreed.
So somebody make a motion.
Can I repeat my motion?
Sure.
I move that we accept the administrative plan as written with changes to the percentage factors. Yellow factor changed from one to 2%, orange changed from more than one to more than two, and red changed from more to two to more than three, with a corresponding change in the student numbers.
So that doesn't address the sub-bullets, which again, is, is what we're getting at of, more work would need to be done with the plan and the sub-bullets.
But we would have a plan.
Yes, but that plan could also be made better of, let's set it at 2%, and the sub-bullets can be talked about offline. Instead of, instead of approving something for the sake of a plan, let's approve a plan, 2%, and we'll go through the sub-bullets at another time.
I would like that motion made. Should I add on to my motion?
I think it depends on
With the possibility of going through the sub-bullets at a, at a later date.
I don't think it's a possibility of, I think it's a direction of Connie, these will need to go. I understand, it's frustrating, but it's still a motion, and we still need to make the decisions for Connie to act upon.
So let me ask this question then, if, if we vote, if we vote merely on the percentages and the numbers, if you will, or each, each of the color categories, none of the current, if I'm understanding this correctly, none of the current bullet points would be put into place until we as a board decide, based on whatever other criteria, that we're adding, we're going to accept some bullet points and not others, is that correct? Is that question clear?
No.
Sort of, it, it's a, let's pick a percent, and the rest of the plan can be finished later on what the sub-bullets are.
Okay, so we're just voting on the numbers and percentages in the motion?
That was simply my suggestion.
I agree.
So, so I'm
But, so the point that, yeah
It doesn't say any direction, that tells us we're, that there's going to be a plan for 1%, 2%, or 3%, 4%
With no belly.
With nothing in there. So to me, that seems really arbitrary.
Well, it's that masking would start at 2%. That, that's what it is. Masking starts at two, and then we can, the other sub-bullets of extracurriculars, whatever else, we can decide what starts at two.
But I think the sub-point bullets are more of an exemption to the true masking idea, in more specific towards situations to allow a bit more freedom. When I'm reading through these bullet points, that's, that's how I'm getting it, right?
Well, it's extracurriculars, it's, it's those types of things. Do we stop extracurriculars at 2% or 3%? Or do we not do anything with it, and we simply say, masks are worn at 2%? The end.
I think in order to have a plan, we have to keep the plan in, which is in place, or someone else needs to come up with a new plan. That is different than this. We're voting on kind of an idea of what we feel may best suit the school district.
With all due respect, the administrative team will not be offering another plan.
Oh, and I get that, right.
And nobody's asking for that. We know that it's the five of us who determine what the sub-bullets are, if there are any.
Do I need to withdraw my motion? It didn't really go anywhere. I withdraw my motion.
Ted, what's your thoughts, man?
I mean, I, I like the indicators, I like the, I think it, they do need to be tidied up, because we can't approve it as presented, because as presented, there are things in here that we just created a policy against, like the, the quarantining, right? So I think we could approve it as presented with striking out some of the things that we just changed up inherently in the plan. I think the 2%, or the 22% mandatory masking, I think we, we've reached consensus that that is probably a good threshold. is probably a good threshold. It's proactive. We know that there's a plan that the administration can enforce. But to your point also, Nick, there's some bullets that provide some flexibility with that masking point as well.
Is it potentially the point where the board would go into a committee to come up with a recommendation and bring back for board approval?
Well, it would probably have to be a committee of the whole, I would guess.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, we have a policy committee, but I think something like this, a committee of the whole would be, I think, the better of the choices.
Well, I guess we're having a meeting of the whole right now, too, right? So... So I guess if we're gonna get into this a little bit, what's the specific things... We'll start with Ted. Ted, that you don't really care for in here? In the bullet point section?
I'm good with the bullet points. I think the clarity is...
Connie, can you pull it up on the slide?
Yeah. Slide 12 and 13. I just... Where I'm at is, we can't approve it as presented, because there are things in here, like, like in orange slide 12, only students who are unmasked will be recommended for quarantine if they're considered close contacts. That's just different than what we just talked about. So I think it's just cleaning up some of that language, right?
Okay.
That's all it is.
So the top two ones are masking?
Absolutely, yep.
Can't read these.
Yeah.
I don't know that what you approve changes that, though.
I suppose it just changes how we work with the health...
If they were recommended.
So, again, we'd still be making that recommendation. So what we're saying by that is, only students who are unmasked will be recommended for quarantine if they are considered close contacts.
So we would change that to mask or unmask? Wait.
I think temperature checks are... I mean, I think we all can all agree that those are pretty useless use of our resources and time.
Agreed. So basically, all of those go away? Do all those...
Are you talking about the orange indicator now?
Do all of those go away, based on what we decided about masking and that temperature checks don't offer much?
I think what we said is, if we set that threshold at 2% instead of 1%, right?
Gotcha, okay, so...
That the 2% is what would trigger...
That masking is mandatory for all grades?
Right.
Not just... Not separating the two.
Correct.
Which 2% would end up being, what, 33 students?
Two...
No, it'd be 22.
2% to 22.
Or 22.
So really, we're cleaning up the language, based on the earlier motion? You can keep the PE stuff, right?
So just the grades 6, 8, and 4K5 being different, is that... Does that change?
As far as masking being mandatory?
So recall, at grades 6 and 8, masking is mandatory in all situations where social distancing cannot be maintained. So for those grade levels, when they're at their desk, when they're not working in partner activities, there's no masking. At grades 4K5, masking is mandatory. That's the recommendation. So I'm not understanding from you...
Gotcha.
Does that stay, or does that go?
I think that could stay.
I agree.
Because there is a difference between kindergarten and eighth grade. So I think that's fine to keep. The exception can be kept, then. Breaks are always great. I don't think we need the temperature checks. It resulted in nothing...
Nothing.
Last year, and I think that's a...
It's just somebody doing... Like, it's taking something away from somebody doing their job.
Correct. And I don't know that we saw much benefit from that extra time of doing that with 900 kids. And that bottom one, does...
I think there's another slide, too, right?
Danny, can you see it better over here? That's the first slide.
Dan, is there any way that you can show that on the screens that I have or not? Because I have my...
That bottom bullet... The bottom bullet... Oh, sorry. One, the previous one, the bottom bullet would go away, too, right? Because didn't we... Connie, the...
Which one are you talking about, please?
First page, orange, bottom bullet.
Connie, can you change it?
Okay, I know. Thank you. Thank you very much for this one.
Slide 12, Steve. Slide 12.
So where am I going?
Back one slide. So the bottom bullet, that would change, right? Based on...
So how would that change?
It says quarantine.
It still says recommended. It doesn't say mandated.
Up until then, I think.
Okay, so still, it would be the parent's choice on...
Unless the grade's 4K through 5.
They were quarantined. Okay, so you could take that one out, then.
Right. Even at recommended? It's not mandating? It still will be recommended, but we don't have the authority of the last bullet point, right? It doesn't say...
Not mandatory.
It doesn't say mandatory. It says recommended for quarantine.
Got it.
So we don't have to strike that?
I read through it a couple times already today.
I'm okay with all the bullet points, to be honest with you.
So let's change that to...
Maybe minus the temperature check one, that might make some sense, I guess. But I think all the bullet points are very well thought through.
Okay, so let's take out temperature checks and change orange, starting at 2% or 22 cases.
Well...
2%, which is 22 cases.
For five consecutive school days, still, right?
For five, correct. It has to be at 22, or is it 23? Uh... 22 cases.
Greater than 2, 22, so that'd be 23 or greater.
So 23 cases, or five days, would put us...
Connie, help me understand the original thought process with the numbers that the administrative team came up with. Wasn't it to try to get ahead of a possible... It was allowing the district to make a decision without having to call board meetings every single time a level changes in lieu of a possible spread in the school. Is that correct?
So we talked about the fact that the 1% was where we were at, at the highest percent we were this last year. So during the entire time of COVID, what we did is, we went back and we looked to see, what was the highest we ever got? The highest we ever got was 12 active cases in the building. That corresponded with 1%. 11 is 1%. So we said, okay, if that's... Because we didn't wanna jump into masking right away, or jump into some changes right away. But we said, let's... What's our highest? So that's where we came up with the 1%. And then we looked at whether Kenosha County has the authority or not. Many school districts, you can see Milwaukee, Kenosha, many school districts make the determination themselves at 3% that that's where they would switch to virtual. So we looked at that 3% and said, okay, 1% is the highest we were. What is that kind of then middle road where we're trying to prevent spread? And then, at what point do we go into... We're not preventing spread, but now we're protecting kids.
Sure.
So that's where those much more extensive measures come in. The 2 to 3% for us, what I think you're recommending is above 3%. Do we move from trying to prevent the spread to trying to protect kids? Not that we're not protecting kids at the lower level, but the focus at the lower levels is to try and keep things normalized and prevent the spread. And then it shifts to, now we're just all out trying to protect kids. So again, looking at that, the 3% is where most districts then moved to virtual. 1% is the highest we were. What's the in-between? 2%? That's where we came up with the different levels.
Thank you.
So take away temperature check, change it to 2% for orange. And then for red. One more? Oh, these are fine. All right, I think those are fine for keeping. So then this red indicator is at 3%. And then, I mean, we can certainly list all these things, but then we would have a meeting. Like, we would have however many meetings before that would happen. So I think this is fair to approve at 3%, knowing that we would meet anyway. Okay, so the motion could really be... We don't... Now we don't have to go through the bullet points. I thought it would be more painful. So that's... Jack, would you like to maybe hear?
I don't know. I haven't been lucky tonight.
Okay.
Third time's a charm. I'll do it, but, you know. Need this to help me get my numbers straight, because I wanna be specific and get it correctly.
So you're just removing the temperature check one?
And removing the temperature. Am I adding that to my original motion, and I withdrew?
I would say start over.
Yeah, okay. Let's start off by move that we accept the plan presented by the administration, removing the temperature check, changing the percentage numbers on the yellow level to greater than 1% equals 23 or greater active cases, but not greater than 33.
So it's greater than 2%? You said 1%. So it's 2% for 22 cases?
Well, the original indicator on orange is greater than 1%. And I was going by the numbers originally...
So, Jack, you could just say with upgrading each number by 1%?
Let me withdraw and start again. I'm gonna get this right.
No, you're good.
Or I don't get to go home.
Okay.
I think my wife misses me.
I understand. One does, yes.
I move to approve the plan originally presented by the administration with the removal of the temperature changes and the increase of percentage numbers, yellow indicator to 2%, orange indicator to greater than 3%, and red indicator to greater than 4%.
I guess we could say that, but we won't get that far. So do we just remove red? Do we say red?
If we have it there and we don't use it, it's still there.
Great, then four.
Am I moved?
Some move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Oh, opposed, sorry. Opposed.
You the man.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a plan. We do not need to meet in committee. Connie, do you have any other questions you need answered?
So you approved a plan that does require masking at some point, so you will have to now take up the issue of religious exemption.
And what issue necessarily do we have to tackle that we will allow it or disallow it? Is that it?
So you will allow or disallow, and if you allow, what is the procedure for determining?
Is there a procedure that has been dictated by whether the... By the state?
No.
By the county?
No.
By anyone?
There are districts that have policies, but there's no... So there is not, according to the attorney, so I don't wanna be... The attorney said that there is no requirement for the district to have a mask... A mask exemption for... A religious exemption for masking. That's what our attorney said. So for example, she gives the example of the federal transportation masking mandate. There is no religious exemption for the federal transportation mandate. Okay. So, however...
So it'd be IEP or 504? Would be...
Disability. There is a requirement under the law for that. The district is able to approve religious exemptions, but then there should be a form, which I proposed a form for you, and a process for making that determination. Whether it's the administrative team looks at the process, or looks at the application, or the attorney looks at the application, or a, you know, however you... But somebody has to approve or disapprove, unless the board were to say, all religious exemption requests are approved.
So really, just to tackle what the true question is, is whether or not the religious exemption is being used in a capacity that's actual factual to a religious exemption, or just trying to scapegoat a rule that the district had put in place?
I'm not going to...
I get that. I just wanted to say that out loud. So I'm okay with having a religious exemption if it is meant to be a religious exemption. I think using anything in religion that's not true to its nature, personally, I feel would be a little bit of an overreach and an individual trying to use it as such.
Nick, who's gonna... Nick, who would decide if a particular parent... Parents fill out the form? And, I mean, this form has been suggested. How would... How would you know if it's a legitimate request?
I wouldn't. I'm just making a statement. So I'm not against the idea of having a religious exemption, but I'm also a common sense individual that lives in the community and heard a lot of comments about it. So I understand.
Yeah, well, I live in the community as well, and I agree with you.
If I can make a comment, I think that this form, if we approve it, should be available in the administrative office, passed out as requested, and not just something online, or you grab three for your friends. It has to be sort of an active move to come in and get the form and fill it out. And I would like to see at least one of the administrators read through it and make sure that it is something that matches up the intent of the document that we're trying to create.
Yeah, and Jack, in addition to that, I don't know if we've gotten any information from our board attorney, but it gets into such areas as Title I, I'm sorry, Title II, Title VII, a number of legal issues. And so, you know, obviously, it's important. And there's a card that is being distributed on the internet, refers to federal law Title II of the Civil Rights Act, which means Title II of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that prohibits discrimination or segregation places of public accommodation based in part on religion. So, you know, I think obviously getting a ruling and getting something of a legal ruling from our attorney, I think would be very helpful. I like the form. I like what it suggests. But again, you know, there are organizations out there that for $50, you can get a religious exemption card, and then that becomes the basis for a religious exemption for students not to wear masks in school. So all I'm saying is, as long as we know what this form entails and how it's gonna be interpreted.
So my recommendation, if you're looking at a process, would be to form a committee to take a look at these religious exemptions, and I would recommend that there's a board member that sits on that committee.
Mm-hmm.
As well as an administrator or administrative team.
Sure.
And then with a follow-up by the district's attorney to take a look at.
Did the... Did the document come from our attorney?
Yes, the recommendations.
So it's already...
The document was taken from a local district and given to our attorney for changes and recommendations. And so what you see in front of you was approved by our attorney.
It looked good.
Okay, so we form a committee, which includes at least one board member and one administrator or two administrators, two board members? What?
Well, again, I'm just gonna say, like, I don't think restricting anyone using the form is... Should ever be... So I think committing... Creating a committee to approve or disapprove is arbitrary to the idea of allowing a person to have that exemption. So nowhere in my mind do I think we should start getting into the particulars of that. However, my statement before was, everyone has a conscience on how to use it appropriately, and I hope that people use it appropriately for the said document that it should be intended for. So I think... I think we're getting into a slippery slope where we start telling people that they can't use certain documents, and that we're the judge on that. So I don't... I think that's a slippery slope, and I think we should just simply allow it, and hopefully people have the correct conscience in using it appropriately.
Love it. Okay, so that being said, we have a recommended document from our attorney. We will provide that in printed form in the district office?
Yeah.
Pick it up, fill it out, it's approved. Okay, somebody wanna put that in a motion?
I move to approve the religious accommodation form as presented.
And approved as turned in?
I move to approve the religious accommodation form as presented.
And approved as turned in? I mean, do, do we just, do we just need to approve the form and then it'll just automatically be accepted?
I, I guess I, I would recommend that you change the form because the form asks for the modifications and accommodations that would need to be made, and if you're going to automatically approve that, that seems kind of.
I get, I get, so is the committee more or less to have a situation?
I mean, I, I get what you're saying, I think the board should, I mean, if you're going to approve all of them, then it just should be a simple, we should revise the form to take out everything other than, do you want one, yes or no?
And the reason?
But you're not going to disapprove them, so what is the point of the reason?
Yeah, because I, I do think there's value in.
There's still a choice.
Sharing a reason though.
You can call it religion or whatever else, it's a, it's still providing a choice.
You're asking for a special accommodation within the school, and I think that when you ask for an accommodation like that, there should be some sort of written justification as to why you want that accommodation.
Great, so it's just taking off the second page or, or the end of it, which modifies it?
We could say that.
So, so with that, with that in mind, then, would there be a review or no review of the application?
Well, if you reviewed, what would the denial process look like? Like, what would it be?
I'm, I'm not asking, my question was very clear, Ted. If we use this form as is, will there be a review of what has been put onto the form?
No, so, so what we're saying is, there will not be a review process. What's being suggested is there won't be a review process, thereto for, let's simplify the form, which removes some of that part, but you still have to fill it out with a reason.
So that's, that, I think that's the important part, so we can let the form be self-certification, certificated itself, right? So if we put a particular thing in there where they have to fill out the form completely in order for it to be in effect, the entire form in its entirety has to be filled out, which then in itself would be kind of self-certification in its, in itself. And if someone wants to hopefully not put fictitious information on there, then so be it, however we have it. And that's on them to determine if they're willing to do that on a religious form to pass into us, just to scapegoat possibly.
Wow. Okay, so, I think the motion would just be, do we approve the form without having a review process? We approve religious accommodations that aren't reviewed by the school? Does that motion make sense? I'm not, sorry, I'm not making it.
I think that the form, we could make the motion saying we approve the religious exemption form barring that the entire form in, the form in its entirety is filled out appropriately.
But Connie said that the part of the form is, is providing information back from the school. Is that what you're saying, Connie? That the way the form is, that there's some sort of process, a review process in place?
I don't remember that. No, there's nothing on the form that goes back to grant permission.
Okay, so it's simply you turn in your form and you have it? Okay, so yes, it is filling out the whole entire form, I misunderstood, okay.
However, you're, you're asking to remove the, the, so Shayna had recommended that piece be in there, but that you're saying to remove the part about modifications?
So there is something you remove. Okay, so yeah, you're, you're removing the modifications part because there isn't a review process. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
So, with the, I guess that was my question before, so the review process wouldn't be necessarily to approve or deny, but to review the modification portion as presented?
I'm sorry, what was the last part you said, Nick? I didn't hear that.
So, I just want to understand the, I, I would never want to be in a committee that's going to deny this, period. I think that's just a crazy place to be in, and I'm not going to put myself into that position, and I don't think the school should.
You have agreement from everyone on that?
Yes, so what I'm saying is, are we saying if we're allowing accommodation to the school that's special than we normally would, would the committee meeting only be particularly to talk about the accommodations that are granted by the form as presented by the parent?
No, so, accommodations would only be so if, for example, you have a deeply held religious belief, that your face must be open to God at all times. A modification to that, an accommodation could be a shield as opposed to a mask. So, for example, in Kenosha, that is typically what is, would be a, an accommodation or modification to the mask policy. If you're going to automatically approve all of them, there's no point in asking if there are other acceptable modifications based on that, or what they're recommending for a modification. So what I'm saying is, if you're going to approve all of them, there's no approval mechanism other than to stamp and say, I got it on such and such a date, and it's noted, then you should take out that.
Number three.
That question about modifications.
Or could it be altered to, do, do you have a suggested modification? And that could be part of the process, it's a, yes, I would like to not wear a mask and have a face, a, a clear face shield.
Why would they request a mask exemption?
I don't, I'm just saying.
My recommendation would be to take that piece out of the form. I think it complicates the form if you're doing automatic approvals.
Correct, I, I feel like I was saying that, so it's removing a point of the document where it's just a, you're filling out the form, you're turning it in, and you are thereto for, you do not wear a mask. So it's approving the form with that part removed.
Is there anything in our handbook? I'm just thinking everything through here. Anything in our handbook that if a staff member that is put into a position where they feel things are unsafe, for example, in this particular situation hypothetically, you know, how, how does it, do we have any policy, do we have any recommendation, how do we handle that? Because essentially, this could put staff in a position where they feel that their position, and I'm not speaking necessarily for myself, but just the hypothetical, that puts them in a position where they worry about getting sick.
So, if, so a employee has an ability to file a workplace safety grievance, but I have difficulty seeing how a student with a mask, when you have an extended period of time of non-masking, makes a difference in that workplace safety.
It was just outside the box, I was just trying to think through a potential issue.
I, I guess I.
A, a follow-up question to that then, based on what you're talking about, could a faculty member, a staff member, any staff member fill out a similar form?
I'm assuming yes.
Okay.
Wait, did we have?
Yeah.
So, was it removing that one?
I move to approve the request for religious accommodation from COVID-19 mask requirement, striking question three, which describes the accommodations being requested.
And then, that the forms would automatically be approved? We don't need.
You're not.
Again, a, a point of clarification on your motion, Ted. In, in the section at the top under where it says, of those two bullet points or, or rectangles, would you, wouldn't the, wouldn't those need to be modified as well?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So moved. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain from this one.
And abstention, one. Motion carries. Connie, is there anything else?
Oh, please no.
Good. I move to adjourn the meeting at 8:19.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries, adjourned.